Good afternoon. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Can't hear the feedback. Welcome to our last meeting of November. Appreciate everybody being here and those of you watching us on our Electric City Television, our invocation tonight will be given by Councilmember Beatrice Thompson in respects to the flowers to be laid by me. Please rise.
Dear Father, we thank you for this day. We thank you for the privilege of assembling here once more to the Golden City. And as we deliberate the business, we ask that you would give us guidance, directions, that we'll make the decisions that will be in the best interest of our citizens and we're so pleased in your sight. Thank you for your many blessings bestowed upon us. In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen. To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have a couple of things before we get into our meeting and a couple of special recognitions and I'm going to ask the Chief to come down and lead us through the first one involving the Police Department. Chief?
Thank you, Mayor, and I thank you, Council. We have a promotion tonight for Lieutenant in the Criminal Investigative Division. And that's due to the most recent promotion of Mike Akins, who was promoted to Captain over patrol. He was in that position. I'd like to ask Lieutenant Robertson to come down at this time and tell you a little bit about Lieutenant Robertson. She graduated from American Intercontinental University in 2007. She previously worked, before coming here to the city, worked for the South Carolina Department of Probation, Parole, and Pardon Services. She worked as a probation agent and supervised over 135 offenders that committed misdemeanors and felonies here in Anderson County. She came to the Anderson Police Department in 2009, worked in patrol, and then worked her way in 2009 up to the Criminal Investigative Division. In 2012, she was promoted to Corporal, and then later, within that summer, was promoted to Sergeant and has remained in the Criminal Investigative Division. She will be promoted to Lieutenant in the same division, and she will manage the entire CID, forensics, and evidence. Lieutenant Robertson, is there anybody here you'd like to recognize tonight?
Yes, my family, my mother, my daughter, and my husband, Michael Robertson.
Okay. Before I administer the oath to you, Lieutenant, I'll pin the badge on you. All right. Lieutenant Robertson, if you'll raise your right hand. Repeat after me. Aye?
Aye.
Lieutenant Robertson?
Lieutenant Robertson?
As a Lieutenant of the City of Anderson...
As a Lieutenant of the City of Anderson...
Will equally, fairly, and impartially...
Will equally, fairly, and impartially...
To the best of my ability and skill...
To the best of my ability and skill...
Exercise the trust...
Exercise the trust...
Repose in me...
Repose in me...
And will use my best endeavors...
And will use my best endeavors...
To preserve the peace...
To preserve the peace...
And carry in effect...
And to carry in effect...
According to law...
According to law...
The purpose for which I've been elected...
The purpose for which I've been elected...
So help me God...
So help me God...
Congratulations.
Okay, we have more promotions. Chief, I'll invite you up to the podium.
Mr. Mayor, Council, appreciate the opportunity to be here tonight. First of all, we're going to be promoting Engineer Michael Hobbs to the rank of Sergeant. Michael has been with the city since July 29th, 2002. He's a graduate of Crescent High School, and he has twice been achieved the Medal of Job Performance. Michael's firefighter, too, certified. He's also a volunteer firefighter with the Flat Rock Bowen Fire Department, where he served as chief for 10 years. Michael has achieved the qualifications to be promoted to Sergeant tonight through testing and interview process, and at this time, we will do the pen and ceremony of his badge. Sergeant, do you have any other family members here that you'd like to recognize?
Yes, sir. My twin brother, Randall Halt, standing in front of his wife. And my fiancee, Morgan Kidd...
Who did the pen.
Who did the pen.
Now, if you'll raise your right hand and repeat after me. Aye?
Aye. Michael Halt.
Do solemnly swear to do my duties as Sergeant of the City of Anderson Fire Department.
Do solemnly swear to do my duties as the Anderson City Fire Department.
To serve my commanding officers with respect and dignity. Serve my commanding officers with respect...
To serve my commanding officers with respect and dignity.
To serve and protect the citizens of the City of Anderson.
Serve and protect the citizens of Anderson.
With compassion, courage, and integrity.
Compassion, courage, and integrity.
To uphold the laws, rules, and regulations...
Uphold the laws, rules, and regulations.
Of the United States of America...
Of the United States of America.
The State of South Carolina...
The State of South Carolina.
And the City of Anderson. So help me God.
And the City of Anderson. So help me God.
Congratulations. Congratulations. Congratulations.
Next, we have firefighter John Slattery being promoted to the rank of engineer. John, do you have any family members you'd like to recognize?
Not today, I don't.
John was hired June 7th, 2013. He's a graduate of Liberty High School and served in the United States Army from 2004 to 2010. John received two Army Accommodation Medals for deployment in Iraq and Afghanistan. He is a member of the Anderson Fire Department Technical Rescue Team, and he will be Lead Engineer at Station 3. Firefighter Slattery also was a top candidate in testing and interview process for this promotion.
John, if you'll raise your right hand and repeat after me. Aye?
Aye, John Slattery.
Do solemnly swear to do my duties as an Anderson City firefighter.
Do solemnly swear to do my duties as an Anderson City firefighter.
To serve my commanding officers with respect and dignity.
To serve my commanding officers with respect and dignity.
To serve and protect the citizens of Anderson.
To serve and protect the citizens of Anderson.
With compassion, courage, and integrity.
With compassion, courage, and integrity.
And to uphold the laws, rules, and regulations...
And to uphold the laws, rules, and regulations...
Of the United States of America...
Of the United States of America.
The State of South Carolina...
The State of South Carolina.
And the City of Anderson. So help me God.
And the City of Anderson. So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you, sir.
Congratulations on all your service.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Thank you for your service.
Yes, sir.
Thanks, sir. Thank you for your service to this country.
Well, now here from our City Manager in regards to Hurricane Matthew disaster recovery. Ms. McCall?
Mr. Mayor and Council, it's with the great pride that we share this information with you tonight. We have the fortunate position to be in where we've not had some natural disaster fall upon us in the recent months like some of our sister cities in the lower part of the state. Any of our cities and counties who are victims of some type of event like Hurricane Matthew, none of us individually can recover from an event like that without some help. We were in the fortunate position to be able to provide that type of help to our sister cities and counties in the lower part of the state, and we'd like to share with you a little bit of that information this evening. I will tell you that as you hear this presentation tonight, it's just brief, but it'll show you the kinds of work that we were able to do to help the city of, to help Beaufort County and to help Mount Pleasant in particular in their recovery efforts. And what this really points out is two things. Number one, should we ever need that kind of help from our sister communities, then we could certainly call upon them to do so. But number two, even though we sent manpower and equipment to these other locales, it meant that somebody here, our existing people, had to continue to take up the slack and man our own forces here to keep things running efficiently and effectively like they should. So, just to give you a little extra tidbit, the mayor received a letter from the Mayor, Linda Page of Mount Pleasant, and it says, "Dear Mayor Roberts, on behalf of the town of Mount Pleasant, I extend my sincerest gratitude and appreciation for your community's assistance during the Hurricane Matthew recovery. Your eager response and willingness to aid our town during a time of great need will not be forgotten. Thanks to your generous support with staff and resources, our residents and business owners were able to return to their normal day-to-day lives very quickly. The importance of this accomplishment cannot be stressed enough. As you well understand, in the aftermath of a storm, it is critical for a community to return to normalcy as quickly as possible. If not for your selfless actions, we would find ourselves in a much different situation than we are today. Furthermore, please know that my office received numerous reports from citizens and staff alike on the professionalism and high-quality service demonstrated by your team members. Your staff arrived early and prepared to work, and they stayed late until the job was finished. Their work and positive demeanor speak volumes for both your organization and your community. It is evident that these individuals have been guided by strong leaders and are instilled with the undeniable value of public service. You are fortunate to have such dedicated and talented staff serving your city, and we are honored to have met and worked alongside them. Once again, my council and I thank you for your continued support during this time. Please know that should the need ever arise, Mount Pleasant stands ready to return your generosity." So, I think that sums up what our resources and our people and how we responded to that speaks certainly very well and how much it was appreciated. And I'd like to ask our Stormwater Manager, Adam Cromer, and also Adam Zanoni, Battalion Chief Adam Zanoni, to show you visually the types of work that they were doing. And I have to thank their, the Fire Department as well as Public Works for their efforts as a whole that made all this come to fruition. So you should be very proud of the assistance we provided.
Okay, we host the Incident Management Team for South Carolina, there's four teams. We do host one of them. And first of all, I'd like to thank the City Council and the City of Anderson for supporting us as much as they have. During this event, we went to three deployments. The first one was down in Charleston. We assisted with the evacuation of the residents before the storm. Then we went down to Jasper County. After the first stage, all their operations were exhausted, so we went down and replaced the operations and the command staff, gave them a break and reorganized, and kept the recovery going. The third deployment was down to Marion County, which I think a lot of people have seen Nichols on the news. That was part of our recovery effort. We stayed down there for five days. Altogether, we had up to 11 members deployed on each of these deployments. So the IMT was active during this. We also had two firefighter mobilizations with the rescue team, which the city also hosts. The first one was, I'm sorry, Williamsburg County, as the storm was going on, we assisted with firefighting efforts. The second one was in Collington County, and we had 12 members go down and provide swift water rescue services. I assume everybody's familiar with the IMTs in South Carolina. And what we do, we staff the command functions. They'll do the operations, the incident commander, the liaison, and either give the current staff a break so they go home and rest, because they usually, the first operational periods, they wear themselves out. And then we also help organize their paperwork so they get FEMA reimbursement. So we were really active during this. The pictures you see, the devastation was tremendous. We formed a lot of alliances throughout the state, and I feel good about what we did and the partnerships we built. And there's Keith Lautermael. He actually spent his birthday down there. We have a lot of dedicated people in the city. We have several members here, Ryan and Miriam, and several up in the back that also have deployed with us. It's comprised of city members. Also, Spartanburg has members on it. It's all in the upstate, we have members on it, and we're always looking for more people. I'm glad we were able to provide the services that we have. It's nice coming back.
There are female pictures.
The Public Works Division was set on two deployments. Our first deployment was October 9th through the 16th. We went to Beaufort County. There were four city employees from the Stormwater and Street Departments that went along with 26 Anderson County employees from their Public Works and Emergency Management. We were there to set up points of distribution for distributing bottled water and MREs. We spent the first day clearing limbs and storm debris from sites at St. Helena and Hilton Head Islands to prepare for setting up the pods. Which if you're not familiar with a pod, it's a location that the public can go to after a disaster to pick up emergency supplies. We also, with the city crews, we were responsible for setting up a command post each day so that the St. Helena and Hilton Head pods could communicate with each other and with FEMA for managing the daily supply and shipments of water and MREs that were coming in. Over the course of seven days, we distributed 26,400 cases of bottled water and 12,600 cases of MREs and along with other supplies such as pet food, bags of ice, and American Red Cross meals. The video you're seeing now is our second deployment from October 23rd to November 4th, a 10-day deployment to the town of Mount Pleasant. It was 14 employees total, 11 from the city sanitation, street, stormwater, and wastewater departments, and there were three county Public Works employees that went. We had 18 pieces of equipment, which included trucks, trailers, knuckleboons, tractors, and other support equipment. We were sent there for storm debris removal. Over the course of 10 days, we cleared over 4,700 cubic yards of vegetative debris and 254 truckloads from 18 subdivisions in the town of Mount Pleasant.
Well, wow. We appreciate the service that you guys did for our fellow sister cities down in the lower part of the state, and appreciate your leadership and everybody else that was involved. Thank you. The minutes of our November 14th meeting have been distributed. Are there any corrections or additions to the minutes?
Make a motion that we accept them as presented.
First by Mr. Stewart.
Aye.
Second by Mr. Buck Roberts. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? The minutes on over 14th pass unanimously. We have... Our first item of O business is request a second and third reading of ordinance 16-21 admitting Section 26-53 of the City of Anderson's Business License Ordinance regarding the solid waste fee. Ms. McCall?
I will remind you of a few things that we talked about last time. Number one, this ordinance does a couple of things. The first thing it does is it allows us to continue to collect a fee on behalf of Anderson County at the time when someone applies for a, applies for or renews a business license in the city. This is a fee that goes to offset the cost at the landfill instead of our paying individual landfill fees. We have about approximately 400 businesses that this will impact that excludes businesses that are home occupations or businesses that are served commercially by dumpsters. The fee, Anderson County has from time to time increased the, this particular fee. It has been $70. Over time, they have increased that, and the current 2016-17 rate goes up to $82.49. That passage of this ordinance will allow us to pass that fee, whatever the county sets as that fee, will allow us to pass that fee along and include it with our business license at the time of a business license collection. This would become effective with our renewals that go out for 2017 or anyone who comes in in '27 to get a 2017 business license. By passing it in this fashion, you would no longer have to act on or pass an ordinance each time that the county changed that fee. This ordinance gives you the authority, and us as your staff, to implement their fee on their behalf, whatever that fee is, without having to enact a new ordinance each time. There have been no changes to this ordinance since you heard it at first reading.
Thank you. Any questions, comments?
I think the only question I had, and I spoke with Mr. Hopkins today with the county just to find out if there was any way that they would maybe be amenable to recycling in the future. They said they, you know, there's certainly some interest in that, but trying to discuss the cost of how it would offset the landfill fees would be another discussion, but, you know, I think the way it's written, I think I would make a motion that we accept it as it's proposed.
First by Mr. Chapman.
Second.
Second by Dr. Thompson for a discussion. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? It passes unanimously on the second reading.
Make a motion and we approve it on third and final reading.
First by Mr. Stewart.
Aye.
Second by Mr. John Roberts. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? It passes unanimously on the third and final reading. Our second item of O business is request consideration of an ordinance to annex and zone to R-15, single-family residential, approximately 4.7 acres located on Rogers Road. Ms. McCall?
This 4.7 acres on Rogers Road is located directly across Rogers Road from Hospice's main campus. The land is vacant. The Hospice of the upstate has no current plans for that property right now. Therefore, we all, Hospice and staff, recommended that the zoning be R-15, which is consistent with the land use patterns in that area. The Planning Commission heard this on November the 15th and unanimously recommended approval, and we've had no calls, citizen calls or inquiries since you heard it at first reading.
Thank you. Any questions, comments?
I just have one. The area I serve, and I've not received any opposition or positive, so I've gotten no calls either on it.
That's the area I serve also, and I'd like to make a motion, we approve this on the first, second reading?
First reading.
First reading.
Our first one, Mr. Horvath.
Second.
Second by Dr. Thompson. For a discussion. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? It passes unanimously on the first reading. Our next item of O business is request consideration of an ordinance to annex and zone to G-C, which is general commercial, approximately 12 acres located at 3801 Clemson Boulevard. Ms. McCall?
This is one of these requests that we take great delight in bringing to you. It is an opportunity to expand our city boundaries, and it's also an opportunity to expand the provision of our city services to this particular piece of commercial property. Certainly as advantages to the commercial owners of this land is our recent designation as Class 1 fire rating, and there may be some other savings to be realized by the applicants as well. Certainly it gives us as the city an opportunity to increase our revenue base. So what you have before you is this 12 acres of land at 3801 Clemson Boulevard, which to us is a landmark for you, essentially means the existing Kmart building and that property that is their parking lot. If you were looking at it, you would see Kmart and the parking lot. So this does not include everything in that shopping center, because it's in different ownerships, but it does include the Kmart building itself as well as the parking lot. And Planning Commission heard it at their November the 15th meeting, recommended approval of it, and your staff certainly recommends it likewise.
Thank you. Thank you. Any questions, comments, discussion?
Mayor, I'll make a motion, we accept it on the first reading.
First by Mr. John Roberts.
Second.
Second by Mr. Chapman. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes unanimously on the first reading. There are two items listed on new business, but if council permits, I'd like to postpone the first item. We still have a couple of things that we need to work through. If that's okay.
You're postponing or table it?
Just postponing.
Postpone.
Table means it can't come back. Well, and I would anticipate that we try to get this done before the end of the year.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Table...it can't come back if you set this table, can it?
No.
It can't?
Isn't it like a year?
Taking something else up until you take care of that, then you can put it back on. But, I mean, if you're going to continue it or postpone it to a different time, the proper method is just to postpone it.
Yeah, okay. All right. Our other item is request consideration of an ordinance adopting an economic development agree regarding Project Spirit. Ms. McCall?
We're not trying to be clandestine with this, but we are trying to follow suit with our counterparts at Anderson County, and when we talk about economic development projects, it's much easier to call a project by a name and refer to it than you know that we're talking about Project A as opposed to some other project. So, in this case, we're talking about Project Spirit, and as you have in past times, you have entered into economic development agreements with parties in order to provide some type of an incentive or an economic development opportunity with a particular party that we're dealing with. So, what we can tell you about this is that we have, like we do with any type of project, we always look at the pros and cons, and to us, pros and cons mean what does it look like in terms of revenues that are to be expected from a project, and what does it look like in terms of anything else, whether it's expenditures, whether it's employment, any of the things that come with an economic development project. We're going to weigh those as we determine if there is an appropriate type of development agreement that continues to provide an enhancement to the developer, but also provide something to the city of Anderson. In this case, what we are looking at in terms of the benefit that the city would derive, we would expect that this proposed development would bring in revenues that are estimated to exceed $850,000 over a five-year period. And because of that, we would expect that in return for that, the city would offer an incentive grant in the amount of $200,000, which would be payable over that five-year period. So, again, this is the type of a grant agreement, a grant development agreement that would be based upon what type of revenues and how much of those revenues come into us and what type of benefit we would derive as a part of that. While we're not divulging the...any details other than those that I just described to you tonight, as this moves forward, just as you've seen the county do, when they enter into something which is akin to this type of an agreement, like a fee in lieu of, there's a point at which the information is divulged, but not the...not the details of the agreement are divulged, but the name of the particular company or development is not divulged at that time. So, we would certainly suggest and recommend that this be passed on first reading and that we would expect to share more details in the coming weeks.
Thank you.
In order to get us to the...an ordinance that would get you to adopt this development agreement, we would recommend that we go into executive session regarding Project Spirit, and this is specifically to talk about proposed location, expansion, the provision of services that encourage that location or expansion of businesses. And at this point, we simply are calling it Project Spirit. So, we would need a motion to go into executive session for that purpose.
Thank you. I'd entertain a motion to go to executive session. First by Dr. Thompson, second by Mr. Buck Roberts.
Are you going to do upcoming events before you go into executive session, or...
We're going to do it when it come out. All those in favor, say aye. Opposed? We stay in executive session. I would entertain a motion to come out of executive session.
So moved.
First by Mr. Stewart, second by Mr. Buck Roberts. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? In executive session, we heard a briefing of economic development agreement. I'm going to get Ms. McCall to recap that for us.
To summarize, what we have to discuss is an economic development agreement regarding Project Spirit, which you have before you tonight, consideration of an ordinance that we discussed about how this particular type of proposed development can in fact bring new revenue to the city of Anderson, new job opportunities, other types of things that we would consider beneficial to our tax base and to our citizens. And based upon that, that takes us into the item B2 on your agenda, which is the consideration of an ordinance adopting an economic development agreement regarding Project Spirit. We would estimate that the revenues are expected to exceed $850,000 over a five-year period, and that because of that return, we would propose a development agreement in the amount...in a grand amount totaling $200,000 per year payable over that...excuse me, $200,000 total payable over that five-year period. The staff would certainly recommend the ordinance be passed on its first reading.
Thank you.
I'd make a motion, Mayor, that we approve this on first reading, the economic development agreement regarding Project Spirit.
Aye.
First by the mayor pro tem, second by Dr. Thompson for a discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It passes unanimously on the first reading. Minister, briefing.
Well, we're in that busy time of year when we've gotten the benefit of Holiday Ice kicking that off, and I'm happy to tell you that our early numbers report that we've had people from as many as 15 different states who've been to participate at Holiday Ice, and certainly that is still going on daily, Monday through Friday, with more extended hours on the weekend. Also, this weekend coming kicks off our holiday season. We have the Christmas tree lighting downtown at 6:00 PM on Friday. Then, on Sunday at 3:00 PM, the Christmas parade. On Tuesday, December the 6th, you can do more than just ice skate. You can go to Carolina Rim Park and see Arthur Christmas, that's the movie for movie night, and that begins at 6:00 PM. Our employee Christmas luncheon is Thursday the 8th, and that gets you at least halfway through the month of December. So, a lot of activities happening. I know that we had...happened to be downtown Saturday, which was Small Business Saturday, and I can say there were certainly a lot of people and a lot of activities happening. So, we...get your calendar ready.
That time of the year.
Dust it off.
Thank you. I'd entertain a motion to adjourn. First by Mr. Buck Roberts, second by Ms. Stewart. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We stay in adjourn.